Try it again.
Okay. Yeah, we've got a little, a couple glitches going on, obviously. Also with our video, we may or may not have video today. So, alright. Item number two is roll call.
Here.
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 Alright, we will proceed on with item number three, the agenda as presented before us. Motion from Jones, second by McInerney to approve the agenda, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, good. Item number four, we have the minutes of the November 30th briefing and the December 1st regular, or 4th, excuse me, regular council meeting. Motion from Hausmann, second by Jones to approve the minutes of those two meetings, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Alright. Item five, claims. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
A motion from Hausmann, second from Jones for approval of claims for today? Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Item six, we have three items on our consent calendar, a plat of lot four, block one, and lot five, block two, Aspen Harbor addition; a plat of lots six and seven, block two, Brandon Industrial Park, first addition; and a plat of lot nine, block three, Heartland Business Park, addition. I will entertain a motion and a second for that.
Second motion.
Motion from Wells, second by McInerney to approve the consent calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Alright, this brings us to our visitors and timed items, and I think this is the, is this the first day we're going to dock questions and whatnot?
I'll start there or finish there, is there any other visitors?
Yeah, is there any other visitors, timed items?
My name's Spencer Shank, I have here an article from the Chicago Tribune from 2004. I'm not going to read you the whole thing because honestly, I don't have enough time. But if you want to read it, it's actually on Facebook on the Brandon, uh, it's the Brandon South Dakota residents for future, um, you know, I'm drawing a blank, it's the standard really, there you go. Um, so I'm going to flip ahead here, I'm going to read one paragraph out of this article, and I actually would recommend everyone to go read it because actually it's pretty interesting. So, the paragraph I'm going to read, it's according to the EPA, "A child under the age of five exposed to radium-laced water has 10 times the lifetime risk of developing cancer as someone exposed to the same amount of radium at age 25," according to the agency. So, obviously we know we have radium in our water. To me, any amount of radium in our water is unacceptable. Rural water has zero, none, not detectable. So, if you go into your homes, most people say, you know, they're saying, "Oh, it's no big deal, we all have water softeners, your water softener's taking radium out of our water." I ask, go down into your basement and look to see how your hot, your water softener's hooked up, because I guarantee you, it's only working on your hot water. Your cold water is going right to your tap, it's unfiltered, city water right from the water treatment plant. So, we're drinking whatever this number is, the 2.21 is the latest that I have. So, we're giving our kids 2.21 picol liters of radium every time they take a drink of water. And at the schools here in, the best school district in our state, their water isn't filtered at all. They're getting 2.21 picol liters of radium. So, I mean, come on, guys, I mean, I know that the Water Committee voted to propose an RFQ, we need to, we need to look at that. I mean, we're putting our kids at risk. I didn't bring her along for this purpose, honestly, Mom's doing a cookie exchange, but, but honestly, we, we need to move forward with this deal, we need to look for other sources of water because it's going to continue to get worse. Thank you.
So, I'll comment. We, uh, we, during the Water Committee meetings, during the process of these meetings, we're going to be tackling some big issues, and one of them is going to be quality of water. And when we say quality, and I'll get to this later, when we say quality, what do we mean? Do we mean, is it safe, does it taste good, is, you know, is there radium in it, is there TDS number too high, etc.? And we'll tackle all those issues. I, I agree, so when we met with MCWC, and I'll be brief because I'm going to get more into this later tonight, but when we met with MCWC, I asked him, you know, "What is the level of radium in your water?" And, and they said, "Well, we don't even have to test for it because it's so low," you know. I'll, I'll be the first to say, I'd like to be able to say that, you know. If we can't, we can't, but that, that is something that I'm going to really research in these meetings and next, or tomorrow night's meeting with the geologist, state geologists and hydrologists coming to present information, and probably will be our most impactful meeting that we have throughout this process, I, I would, I would venture to say. I think we're going to be given some really good information from them as far as where to go from here, and where to go from here will involve choosing water sources. And, yes, there is better quality water out there that we can go after. I've said it before, I'll say it again, that's personally, that is something I would like to, to try and do and achieve, I'm not saying we have to walk away from everything we've done here, I'm just saying I'd like to, if, from, from this point forward, I would like to add better quality water than what we're, than what we're getting thus far. Having said that, yes, our water is safe, the, the US government made it very clear, our water is safe, but can it, can we, can we take it to the next step? Can it be better? Can it be softer, or can the radium level be better? I, I would sure like to think so, I would sure like to, to try and accomplish that.
The EPA also came out with this study that says, "Any amount of radium is a, would cause a lifetime risk to our children, any amount." So, the EPA standard is five picol liters, that's the maximum amount, but the study also says that any amount of radium poses a lifetime risk to children under the age of five.
Anything else?
And I will agree with that, again, I, I will make sure that we research this 100% when it comes to how safe is it, even though we're being told it's safe, how safe is it? And can we do better? Because I think we can.
If we move forward with the status quo that we're on, I will move out of Brandon, and I know other people will go too, I'm just going to say that.
She likes that little nook, nook in there, yeah, well, it's a nice little hiding place in there. Okay.
Hello, my name is Jess Ellifson, I live at 1104 North Chestnut. I'd like to talk to you guys tonight about, I guess, to clear up some of the inconsistencies in the article that was printed in the Brandon Valley Journal, and I was given a chance to talk with Jamie from the Journal, and she is going to print those clarifications here coming up, but some things became pretty glaringly obvious to me. So, I'd like to start at the beginning, even though this is a mute issue, I'd still like to make sure that you guys become aware of the reality of that situation. You know, at the first Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, uh, for the conditional use permit for your water tower, all the rural neighbors that were affected by that all were present, and they all voiced their opposition to that choice. Brandon was found to be careless and deficient concerning all possible land options for their water project, and Brandon was given an extension, saying that Brandon would need to work diligently to explore other options for that. And this is where some of the inconsistencies showed up in that article. It was after that meeting that John Brown and Brian Reed came out to our farm, and they talked to Dave Ellifson and myself, my father, and they looked us straight in the eyes, and they asked us for two acres of land. Now, we found this fairly odd, didn't think much of it at the time because we knew the Nelsens were only asked for one acre of land, and so, we didn't want to sell the land, and after, we told them we'd think about it. We spoke with all the other adjacent landowners, and after speaking with them, we thought it would be a much more prudent location to, uh, sell them two acres, to sell Brandon two acres of land up against the interstate which we own, as that would put that water tower outside of our purview and out of our front doors, seemed like a much more reasonable location. We again talked with Brian Reed, and we, uh, we gave them the same price that was offered for the Nelson land, at $60,000 an acre, because we knew that's what the Nelsens were offered, and so we offered them the same. Now, that was for two acres of land, not one, and that is a detail that has been consistently left out, and I can only assume that the only reason we were even asked for two acres was to make our price look inflated. And I've heard several other people and members of this council even say that, because they were not aware we were asked for two acres. You know, our family has lived on that farm for five generations, and the integrity of our history and our farmland is of the utmost importance to us, it is not to be taken, to have it not taken seriously and respected on any level is, is not acceptable. You know, and this brings us up to the third option, and after my father and myself and the Journal had a chance to talk with Kelly Wright, we found out some glaring inconsistencies with that as well. Kelly said that it was not Brian Reed that contacted him, in fact, it was John Brown that contacted him, offered him $20,000 an acre and asked him for an acre and a half of land. Kelly Reed never, Kelly Wright never agreed to anything, nothing. There was no other contact made, there was no other meetings held, and so, this price that is being quoted around at $50,000, I don't even know where that's coming from, somebody's just making that one up as well. This brought us back to the second Planning and Zoning meeting, all the adjacent landowners were once again, we voiced our concern, and before Planning and Zoning gave their decision, John Brown was asked, if they were denied, would Brandon appeal that decision? And John Brown stood right up and said, "Nope, we will not appeal your decision here tonight." Everyone was there, everybody heard it, it's public record. So, we all left that meeting thinking, "Hey, good deal, don't have to worry about that, Brandon will go explore other options."
Will you repeat that, John Brown said he wouldn't appeal what?
The council's, the council's, or the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny that conditional use permit. So, we all left that Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, we were happy, we thought, "Hey, you know, Brandon will go find a better location, not, that doesn't disrupt Brandon's relationship with the rural community and the township," and we thought, "Hey, good deal." Couple weeks later, we got a new letter in the mail saying that, uh, planning, that Brandon was going to appeal it. We were shocked. We all, once again, all the landowners showed up to that Planning and Zoning meeting, and this time Lisa Marso took the podium. She thanked the Planning and Zoning Committee for meeting with her beforehand. She presented no new information, and out of nowhere, the ruling was overturned, and they somehow granted that conditional use permit. We found that extremely odd. The Planning and Zoning Committee originally had given a reason for denying that permit as Brandon City utilities should be located within Brandon City limits, and when they overturned it, they gave no reason. You know, the rural landowners outside of the Brandon City limits never wanted this water tower in our front yard, but we were willing to compromise and put it in our backyards because we understand that Brandon residents have an issue here, and we wanted to work with you. There was no compromise from Brandon with us. So, we decided to dig in and start doing research, we thought maybe we could find a lower cost alternative and a compromise. There's never been any malicious attempt to challenge the city council in their decisions, but when concerned citizens have continued to find regarding this Brandon issue on water is that the problem was far deeper than just putting a water tower in our front yard. You know, well, seven immediately comes to mind, and I was just amazed that Sioux Falls drilled that well, and when they found out what was in it, they decided that that was not a well for anybody to be drinking. So, I was kind of amazed when Brandon decided, "Oh, yeah, but it's fine for Brandon." You know, the Water Committee that's led by Don Wells has, has been extremely supportive, and he's open and working with the community, and we are all extremely grateful for that. But, you know, we, we have seen some concerns with that Water Committee. I know the last time that I just, was at the Water Committee this last Tuesday, Brian Reed was pressed several times for a number of the radium in well seven, and he repeatedly said, "Hi." Well, hi isn't a number. And that appears to show a consistent pattern of Brian's problem with transparency, which is what's breeding the contempt between this community and this government. You know, I spoke with you, Larry, and we had a great conversation, and I think a lot of, you know, when we get a chance to sit down and talk to each other and actually find out what's, what the truth is, what the reality of the situation is, it's far different from what we're seeing on both sides. You know, since this has all started, the concerned citizens in Brandon have been getting, given little to no respect at times, and let me remind you that this city government works for the people, not the other way around. Brandon and this city has worked, Brandon's city government has worked for decades quietly, without much public input, and I'm guessing that, you know, this sudden interest and desire for transparency has rattled everyone a little bit, it's, it's a lot of questions, and I know I wouldn't want to be on the receiving ends of them, but I didn't sign up for that Throughout all this, I have seen very intelligent and educated people stand up and raise concerns, and I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that they've all joined that Water Committee, I see, I see intelligent people on there, and, and some people that are going that are also raising intelligent questions. There's an incredible wealth of knowledge in this city amongst the citizens, and I would hope that this council would listen to them all and utilize it. I would encourage you all to be open to what Mr. Wells has to bring forward to you, and I hope you, I wish you all luck in creating a better future for this great town that I'll continue to live next to, and I would hope to, in the future, have a better relationship with. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Council, may I respond to a couple things?
Yes.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like you to know that there was no finding ever that the city was found to be careless in the selection of a site for the water tower. Nobody has, no, Minnehaha County Planning Board, no Minnehaha County Commission, no court ever found the city to be careless in that. The Minnehaha County Planning Board asked, and Commission, asked the city to go back and visit with the neighboring owners of the area to find out if anybody would be willing to sell land, reconsider some different sites, and have some meetings. That was not legally required, it's not legally required in a conditional use permit, that is something that the Commission, the Planning Commission asked the city to do. The city sent letters out offering to hold those meetings, held a number of those meetings, the city then came back to the Minnehaha County Planning Commission for the CUP, it denied it. The city then appealed that within its rights to the Minnehaha County Commission, the Minnehaha County Commission heard testimony. It was asserted this evening that I thanked the board or the commissioners for meeting ahead of time, I never thanked them for meeting ahead of time, I never had a meeting with the commissioners or with the board, the Planning Commission, ahead of time, the only time I ever had communication with them was at the meeting. At the Minnehaha County Commission meeting, there was a lot of testimony taken, they, contrary to what it said, did give a reason, and that is in the minutes of the Minnehaha County Commission meeting, they stated that the city met all the conditional use permit requirements, there was some discussion that the city also did not have to have legal authority for the conditional use permit to exist outside of the city limits, because that's what a conditional use permit with the county is for. The Minnehaha County Commission then granted the conditional use permit, that was appealed to the Circuit Court, and the Circuit Court entered the decision affirming the conditional use permit. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that is the history of what happened and what is in the meetings.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Mr. Ellifson, Jess?
Yeah.
When was the $120,000, when was the $120,000 offered?
Can you go back up and speak in a minute, sir?
Thanks, Jess.
Dave never made that offer.
Dave never made that offer? I disagree with you.
Would, would you like to hear it from Dave?
You just, you just told the council that you came up with $120,000 because it was based on the Nelson property value.
Correct.
That offer was made, you're contradicting yourself. We didn't come up with that number.
No, but when you repeat it, you make it sound like we offered $120,000 for one acre of land.
No, the offer was for $120,000.
For two acres of land.
That was to be determined, we only needed an acre. Now, when was that offer made?
Here is the map drawn up by Stockwell Engineering, and you're right, it's not two acres, it's 2.26 acres.
When was that offer made?
Sometime after the first Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, so after June 2016?
Sure.
Okay, when was the offer made?
Sometime after June.
No, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty important that you provide that date, or a timeframe.
Okay, sometime between the first Planning and Zoning Committee meeting and the second.
Okay, the final one where they decided to deny the CUP in February of 2017?
Sure.
Sometime in that timeframe?
Okay.
Okay? The Nelson property did not change to $60,000 for that acre until March of 2017, at least two months after what you allege.
That's not what, you know, we got that number from Randy.
That was before Randy Nelson offered it to us for 60.
Well, those are those inconsistencies, I suppose, huh?
The council approved $60,000 an acre in March of 16, so your numbers in your timeline don't add up, sir.
You know, I don't know how those specifics really quantify into any kind of problem, but, uh, once again...
They do quantify into a problem because you're not telling the truth.
You know, I am telling the truth as we have all been living through this since the beginning, and we didn't just make that number up out of nowhere, we all speak with each other out there, you know, we talk to each other, we're neighbors. That's what Randy told us, you know, was some offer set in concrete? Nope, but I'm guessing that's what he had in his head, you know?
We had an agreement that it was 50 up until March of 17.
And would you say that Randy is the one that then increased it to 60?
That, that was the request.
Yeah, so, I'm guessing that when he told us he wanted 60,000 an acre, that's, you know, probably a reasonable assumption that that's where we came to unassume that he was getting $60,000 an acre, whether or not you agreed to it yet or not, you agreed to it in the end, so it appears to be correct?
We had an agreement in that timeframe with Randy of $50,000 an acre.
Okay, we don't know what, what your agreement was with him, we can only rely on what Randy told us, and since Randy's not here to, I guess, clarify your timeline, I don't know what the difference would be or, or why you want to pinch that.
My timeline works, yours does not.
What doesn't work about my timeline?
Actually, his timeline does work, Brian.
No, it doesn't.
Who does it not work for?
It doesn't work for the actual facts of what happened.
Here is the map drawn up by Stockwell Engineering. And you're right, it's not two acres, it's 2.26 acres.
When was that offer made?
Sometime after the first planning and zoning committee.
Okay, so after June 2016?
Sure.
Okay, when was the offer made?
Sometime after June.
No, it's pretty, it's pretty important that you provide that date. Or a timeframe.
Okay, sometime between the first planning and zoning committee meeting and the second.
Okay. The final one where they decided to deny the CUP in February of 2017?
Sure.
Sometime in that timeframe?
Okay.
Okay? The Nelson property did not change to $60,000 for that acre until March of 2017. At least two months after what you allege.
That's not what, you know, we got that number from Randy.
That was before Randy Nelson offered it to us for 60.
Well, those were those inconsistencies, I suppose, huh?
$60,000 an acre in March of 16. So your numbers in your timeline don't add up, sir.
You know, I don't know how those specifics really quantify into any kind of problem, but once again...
They do quantify into a problem because you're not telling the truth.
You know, I am telling the truth as we have all been living through this since the beginning. And we didn't just make that number up out of nowhere. We all speak with each other out there. You know, we talk to each other. We're neighbors. That's what Randy told us, you know, was some offer set in concrete? Nope, but I'm guessing that's what he had in his head.
We had an agreement that it was 50 up until March of 17.
And would you say that Randy is the one that then increased it to 60?
That was the request.
Yeah, so I'm guessing that when he told us he wanted 60,000 an acre, that's, you know, probably a reasonable assumption that that's where we came to assume that he was getting $60,000 an acre. Whether or not you agreed to it yet or not, you agreed to it in the end. So it appears to be correct.
We had an agreement in that timeframe with Randy of $50,000 an acre.
Okay. We don't know what your agreement was with him. We can only rely on what Randy told us. And since Randy's not here to, I guess, clarify your timeline, I don't know what the difference would be or why you want to pinch that.
Yours does not.
What doesn't work about my timeline?
Actually, his timeline does work, Brian.
No, it doesn't.
Who does it not work for?
It doesn't work for the actual facts of what happened.
Well, if you're talking about the facts, a lot of the facts come out of your mouth throughout town, so...
Okay, we're getting into...
You know, the pure fact is that we were asked for 2.5 acres, 2.26 acres of land, according to this map drawn up by Stockwell. And I mean, the bigger part is, is why is everybody else asked for more land than what you needed?
We didn't ask for 2.6. We said we could do it on one. Your family requested that it be moved further east, which requires more land purchase.
Here's the map.
That is a site plan that was developed to move the town further east.
Where they're asking for 2.26 acres of land for us. Not that it matters.
Chris Costin, I live on 920 North Chestnut. And I'm not going to get in a debate here at all, but, you know, when we start talking about inconsistencies and things like that, when Brian Reed and John Brown came to my property, talked to my wife and I, and they were required to come, they didn't come out of good faith. This Minnehaha Council said, "You guys need to go talk to these neighbors to find out what's going on." And they seemed genuinely concerned about our concerns because I'm the house that that water tower is next to. And they've put out measurements that are not correct. I have voiced that in the Minnehaha County Council, I've done it to this council, and I've done it in court. And I've asked people to come out and measure with me. I've asked you guys to come out and look where this water tower is going to be put. But both of those men lied to my wife and to me when they said, and they had concerns with our concern, they said, "You know what? If this gets voted down or denied, we have other options." And my wife and I felt, "Well, that's good. There's other options." And those two men said that to my face and my wife's face. And that's an integrity issue to me. So when we hear more and more things, it's hard for me as a Brandon resident to believe certain things, because when I'm lying to, it's very difficult. And especially when it's done to my wife. And they're very cordial when they're out there. And I've got an ill will towards them and anybody on here, but it's just like, I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a question, something that, there's a lot of legal issues here regarding this that I don't, I guess, fully have my head wrapped around. But Mr. Wright was the third option, right? Correct, I should say. Is that true? Did John approach him about a price? Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't... I guess I would prefer a land purchase with a landowner if the city's doing it coming from a city employee or staff member of the city rather than a consulting firm.
I assume that was more of just initial discussions to get a ballpark idea, right? I mean, if we're talking 20,000 versus 300,000, we need to have an understanding. I'm assuming that's where those conversations were done, right? Negotiating on behalf of the city for a final price, you're just kind of getting a general...
We were not negotiating at that time. We were simply looking for alternatives. And those alternatives included multiple areas, multiple people in that area, and us contacting them, so...
So did we, as the city, ever approach Mr. Wright with a, you know, with a, with an actual offer?
No, we were, we, I'm sorry. We had talked to them about an option to purchase the land.
What the city's most interest is in total cost, the total incremental cost of the proposed land, right? I mean, whether one is 25, the other's 35, the other's 45. When we're talking incremental piping costs of 400,000, 200,000, those weigh just as heavily in the decision as anything else. What I can't get over is in the last couple of months, when we keep talking about this thing, is did the city overpay by 10,000, 5,000? Is the land actually worth 51,500 or 60,000? At the end of the day, we were making decisions that made the most sense for all Brandon, all the taxpayers that are responsible for paying the incremental cost of 200,000 or 500,000. Those are decisions that we need to take into account every single day. We're getting hammered on one end that our water costs and our sewer costs are way too high. And now we're quibbling and saying we should have just paid the extra 200,000. That's why I'm just struggling. I keep hearing it from both sides, but... And again, we understand everything you guys are going through and the impact it's going to have. It wasn't a decision that was made lightly, so...
Thank you. Is there any other questions or answers that we can provide? Yeah, if you want to.
I know we were going to talk about the DNR and a lot of the discussion there around water quality was one of the things we're going to talk about tonight. I think the other, we wanted to give an update on fire and whether we have enough water to fight a fire there. I don't know if there's anything else, Brian? Do we have prepared responses or a summary update of kind of the highlights from the DNR presentation?
Yeah, there's a very good summary. The best thing to do is go and watch the presentation by Mark Mayer. He is the program administrator for the South Dakota DNR drinking water program. He stated in that presentation that the water in Brandon meets and exceeds all federal requirements. Yes, it does have some secondary contaminants in it, iron, manganese, hardness, and TBS. Those are not enforceable guidelines. But as far as safety of drinking water, we meet and exceed all federal primary drinking water standards. We have received the Secretary's Drinking Water Award for 16 years in a row, one of 44 communities in South Dakota that has done so. And in that presentation, Mr. Mayor goes through what is tested for, what the differences are, the testing schedules. It was a very good presentation. And I encourage anybody to go to our website, click on the YouTube link, and they can watch that presentation. It's about 45 minutes, I think, but very good.
Okay, anything else? Yes.
Last summer, prior to the city council placing the watering ban in place, we did have water levels in both the in-ground reservoir and the elevated storage tank that were about five feet, which left us with about, I think, 110,000 gallons of water in storage for fighting a fire, which is getting to the bare minimum that we are comfortable with. That was when we were producing 2 to 2. million gallons of water a day. We are currently going through, well, Raleigh can tell you the numbers better than I can.
I guess just to mention too, like Brian said, we were down to that five-foot mark, but well seven was not in service at the point when that happened. We try and use it as a backup. When we did kick that on, if you...
Well three.
Or, excuse me, well three, yeah. I was thinking, I got well seven, I got well seven on my mind for later in the presentation. But yeah, anyways, if we kick well three on as our emergency backup, we can actually produce 936,000 gallons out of that well in a 24-hour period. So we would have had almost a million gallons. So if there's a fire, it can be fought.
How long does it take to throw that switch to kind of enact the emergency well backup?
As long as it takes for my gentleman to drive from my shop right over here to the, right up where the old Dairy Queen used to sit, flip a switch.
And that's a place, you know, where we're at with the water levels during that week is that's a place we don't intend to ever go back to. I mean, you know, there'll be a huge effort this spring to enforce conservationism, you know, enforce the odd even schedule. We view that, with that enacted, with the communication out there, we don't view this as something that's going to happen again here next year and/or, you know, if our projections play out in the next five years. You know, if people are following the odd even, we don't envision that we'd be at the same spot we were last summer. Go ahead, Spencer.
Now that we know that the HMO system's going to take away capacity too, now that we know the HMO system's going to take away plant capacity, is it going to be odd even from the start so that way? Because I don't see...
It will be odd even from the start, but in this, Raleigh or Brian, I want you guys to kick in. It's not because of the HMO system. The HMO system is not going to impact it nearly to that degree.
Last year, you know, we were making enough water, and now we cut back our plant capacity. So we're making less water, so...
And thanks for bringing that, because I think it's an important piece because that's been commonly out there on some of the threads. But I think what's been stated out on social media and Raleigh, please interject, has been way overblown on the impact of the HMO system to our efficiency, to our processing, to the, you know, the number of gallons we're going to produce.
The plant capacity will not diminish. When the plant is in operation, it goes to a backwash system, which is a level, a tier after tier after tier of things that have to be happening for that to even do a backwash. First of all, well seven is not connected to the city's water system yet. It is dead-ended outside of well six. And it cannot be done because we took the well eight project out of the mix throughout the three bids and stopped all projects. So that is not even hooked up to the well, to the plant. The HMO process does not affect the quantity of water coming in. We always do backwashes. According to Tonka, when we built the plant in 1998, we were supposed to do backwashes every 25 hours minimum. We backed it down to 24 just so it was working on a 24-hour basis. The more we use the water, the more it's going to do a backwash. Just because it's doing a backwash does not stop the quantity of water coming in. That well is going to pump whatever it can pump all the time. It's pumping as hard as it can all the time. What it does is raises the levels in the other three filters as one's doing a backwash. So it's not stopping the quantity coming through.
And just as a point of clarification, Raleigh, your history and my history with the city of Brandon as far as being here is about the same. When I was on the fire department, I know that there were a couple of times that we fought very large structure fires, and we worked very closely with the city. And we contacted them when we knew that we were going to be using a large amount of water. And you kicked in those pumps, and we never had an issue. One of those fires, we put over 400,000 gallons of water on.
Teahaus.
Teahaus.
That was tire company that you guys needed over, yeah, I was thinking 385,000, but we never had a problem fighting that one.
I guess we have technical specs and experts in the field that would contradict that. So maybe we need to bring that forward.
I work with it on a daily basis. I see it every day.
That's great. We also have engineers that contradict what you just said, so...
Well, I'm telling you what Tonka told us.
I just struggle with all the social media posts, and everybody's an expert on social media, and they can claim whatever. We have the people that work with it every day. We have professional engineer.
I do too.
I just don't know why it's getting to this point, to be honest. I feel bad for our city employees that work so hard on this every day, that receive the awards. It's unfortunate.
Okay. Anything else? All right, and you have a water committee meeting tomorrow, correct?
Yeah, and I'll give a full update. You notice I'm being a bit quiet, but I'll give a full update later. And as far as these issues go, the reason I'm being kind of quiet is, I mean, I plan on addressing all of this throughout our process. And I think the experts that we bring in will be invaluable, so...
I agree with you. I agree with you. All right.
But yeah, I do want to say, I do want to, as far as the city approaching a resident about purchasing land, I think that needs to come from, I want to speak to that for a second. I wouldn't, I guess I, I would like to see that process come from the city rather than an engineering firm. Nothing against John. I mean, again, like I say, I think John does a good job as far as his work goes, but nothing against John, no matter what the engineer is. I would like to see that come from the city. I don't know if I'm alone on this, but it seems, it just seems a little more prudent that if we're trying to buy land, that we be the ones to speak to him.
I agree. Yes.
For John to go. Yeah, I just, I would like to see a better paper trail, I guess. I mean, some of these things that are being mentioned, if this was, I mean, with real estate deals, if we had proposals that were submitted in writing, I think we'd all be a little more clear on this.
Well, I think it's prudent to bring this fact forward too. These were very, very preliminary conversations. We were not, we were not negotiating a cost. We were, we had not gotten to that point. The only thing we were doing was looking at options. I think if it would have been something that we're certainly serious about, the city would have been involved knee deep. But it was very preliminary.
That is very true. I guess we looked at different alternatives simply so we had alternatives. And the reason we reached out to different property owners was just to see if they were willing to sell. If it got into that position, obviously Brian, and Brian was, and the city was involved during this whole process, it was simply just to look at alternatives so that we had a ballpark idea where we could go with, if things didn't work out where we had originally proposed.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for your input. We'll move on to golf course committee report. We have some contracts.
We've got one contract for the events coordinator. John and I want to meet with Zane when he gets back from Texas. He's down there with some medical issues. But on page 25, you've got the revised events coordinator contract. The only change there is under item 2A, the annual salary, 38,958,40. Everything else remains the same.
I have a motion from Hausmann, second by Jones, to approve the events coordinator position and contract. Any questions? If not, all in favor, sign the five by saying aye. Opposed? Anything else, golf? People played this weekend. They were out there this weekend, too.
Collected some fees today. I talked to Andrew, so...
Good. I was going to say, I thought I saw him walk in. Is he hiding in the back? I thought I saw Andrew walk in, yep. Okay. All right. We'll move on to police. We have the police report in front of us. Chief is in the back room. Anything else? Okay. All right. We'll move on to park and rec. We have the park maintenance report in front of us. And we have a request to hire a staff, a park and recs maintenance assistant.
Recommendation is to hire Seth Olson as a full-time parks and rec maintenance assistant at line 21, step one of the 2018 salary schedule. Become effective January 1st.
He has been with us part-time for?
Six years.
Six seasons or six years of work?
Six seasons.
Mayor Devon did narrow it down to three. And then he decided, or he and Julie felt that this was our best choice.
All right.
So I would make a motion to hire Seth Olson, please.
Motion from Fish, second by Wells, to hire Seth Olson for park and rec maintenance. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, sign the five by saying aye. Opposed? All right, then we have RCM Service Pay App number three, Aspen Park concession and restroom building.
Pay app in the amount of $32,003, $34,000, $38,000 for work completed to date.
Would you make a motion to approve that, Mayor?
Motion from Fish, second by Hausmann, to approve the pay app number three for the concession stand and restroom building. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, sign the five by saying aye. Opposed? Anything else, parking rec?
I do have a few updates, if I may. So we had our meeting last week, I think, last week. And so there's good progress being done on Field A. So if you haven't been out to Aspen, drive out their sods in, they're making really good progress. Stone Ridge, we got the sidewalk done around the playground equipment, but we were not able to get the flooring done, so that'll be done in the spring. So we're working on that. John and our, our chairman of our park board, John, are working on trying to lay out that second entrance, you know, because that's our real concern with Aspen. We want to get that second entrance. So they're working, working on that. Um, we had also talked about doing a survey of our citizens to see what sorts of amenities they would like in our park system. So that is in play, and we have planned to distribute it throughout the month of February. So we're working with like the different, um, association groups. We're hopefully going to work with the school, different ways to get it circulated. We'll work with the newspapers, um, probably put it in our water bills, those sorts of things. So we're planning on that. And our final thing is Devon made a suggestion that we merge our tree board, sorry, Joe, tree board with the park board, okay? Yeah, taking the tree board, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he got the library one. Um, the only thing he came up with is that, um, our understanding is that the park board was formed by resolution, and this merger has to be done by ordinance.
The tree board was formed by ordinance, the park board was formed by resolution.
Oh, I got it backwards.
We kind of got to merge.
Okay. However, we do that, okay. Um, with the, with the council, how, how does the council feel about merging those two together?
I think that's an excellent idea.
The, the reason we're merging is because if you look on the back wall, we are part of Tree City. And in order to stay Tree City, we have to have a park board. Well, the park board does not meet, or tree board, excuse me, tree board does not meet on a regular basis. It's met as needed. And so if we merge that with them, you guys meet once a month. That would fulfill that, but it, it has to be, the tree has to be in, in, in with it, or we lose our Tree City. Correct, Mr. Coughlin?
Yep, all we have to do, we can call the board whenever we want. And while we state in the ordinance that that board will deal with tree, tree issues.
Council's okay if we move ahead with that? Okay, so whatever, whatever magic we have to do to do that, Brian.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to administration, and the first up is a sad thing. Between Roger and his wife Mary, they have served on this council for, oh, yeah, numerous, numerous, numerous years. And he has resigned due to some issues with his health, and has in years past, we've had council people move out, have council people with health issues, and they have resigned. And I have always said that they need to come before us, because it is these people voting, not me voting, on who it is. And so I tasked Brian with coming up with a shortened form to help them when they come up to interview. And then Brian, you've got some, um, things, but right now I need to, um, have a motion and a second, and then nobody wants to make this motion, and nobody wants to second it, because Mr. Brooks has been a valued member of this council and close friend. All right, so I have a motion from Jones and second from Hausmann to accept Roger's resignation. All in favor? Opposed? Me, but my vote doesn't count, so, um, with that being said, we, we will accept it now.
Just as a point of order, um, in question, uh, with Roger being the vice president, I assume when that new person is placed, there'll be a, a vote with the council to, okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Yes. So, um, do you want to?
Well, the council.
It's written in front of me, but I'll let you.
You also, well, you also need to make an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Roger was the council rep on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and remember, if we change that ordinance, that the council rep acts as the chair. Currently Paul Bosch is the vice chair, so the, the meetings can operate. But if you want to, it would certainly be appropriate to appoint a current council member to that position. And you'd, you'd need to run the meetings for P and Z. They meet the?
Yeah, I know.
First and third Thursdays of each month at six thirty.
Um, I know there's a meeting this Thursday. Do we have to do it right today? Could, can I visit with my council members?
You don't, you don't need to. Like I said, Paul Bosch is the vice chair. He can run the meeting. If you remember, um, the council rep does have a vote if there's a tie.
Yes.
In case of a tie.
Yes, we, we rearranged it to that.
P and Z can certainly function.
So we can do it next meeting and then get that bond.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So there is a, um, a timeline.
Yep, I, I put together a timeline very similar to what we've used in the past for appointments to the council. We do not have enough time to schedule a special election. Um, special elections are prohibited within ninety days of the general election, which is the second Tuesday in April, which means you would have to have the special election later than January tenth. But you need sixty days for petitions to be filed for any election. So you're actually a hundred and fifty days out from the general election. So you must, if you, you, you must fill the vacancy by appointment. So here's a timeframe. What we've done in the past is we usually publish it twice in the paper. We get interest, and then the council will interview, I shouldn't say interview, meet those candidates. Uh, last time was at a special meeting prior to a regular meeting. We could either do it then or after a, after a briefing meeting, and then make that appointment, uh, at the January fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. Uh, that appointment would fill the position until May seventh, two thousand eighteen, and the, there will be election to fill the remaining two years of that term at the general election on, on April tenth.
Yeah, and that's the same process that John went through not so long ago. So, and that's how I, so. So if there's anybody interested in that, um, the forms are at City Hall.
Yep, we can email them to you.
We're, we're emailing to you, yeah, email me, email any of the council people saying I'm interested, and they will get the form and email it to you, and we will keep you. Well, we will.
And then the person that gets it, if they're also interested in running after May, they still have to do all the official stuff.
Yeah, correct. If they're still interested, um, they still need to fill out their petition starting in February, um, to fulfill that two-year, two years left on the term.
Yep. Yes, it goes from twenty eighteen to twenty, April twenty twenty, so, okay.
Well, I think that we should, um, thank Roger for his years of service.
Very much so.
And Mary, she's, she's been in the thick of it too with him, so, um, they've served our community well.
Very much so, yes. Mary was on the council fifteen years ago when I took this chair, and she'd been on there long before, and Roger came on shortly after, so.
I would like to think that, uh, as a whole, when Roger gets a little bit better and, and things are better for him, that we could invite him down and we could personally invite him in a meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, yeah. You, you are on the same page as me, yes, very much so. We have some garbage haulers and some sewer cleaning.
We have two garbage haulers that, that submitted late. Um, their licenses expire at the end of the year. We have one hauler that has not submitted an application yet, and that is Waste Management. We will notify them tomorrow by certified mail that their license expires at the end of the year. They can certainly submit an application to renew, and the city council can take action on that on January second, but they will need to miss a day or two of service to their customers.
I'll make a motion to accept Novak and Sioux Falls sanitation.
Um, do you want to do the store cleaners with it, because it's listed as the same? That's the next page. We got Bender's, Golden Rule, Hander, Jones, and Roto Ruder.
Yes, sir, I will add that to my motion.
Are we any different than other communities our size in requiring this? Is this a exception process that Waste Management would not be accustomed to, or?
No, um, there's numerous ways that cities allow garbage to be picked up, uh, anywhere from the city awards a single source, um, where we take bids for recycling and garbage services, to we're, we're what's called an open city. Anybody that comes in and gets a license can come in and haul. Uh, that's a pretty typical process, not unusual anywhere. Um, they just need to get a license so that we know who's hauling. We do have regulations they have to meet with regard to insurance, workers' comp, um, types of vehicles, um, performance to a degree. You know, they can't be leaving garbage all over the place, and without that license, we don't know who's in what neighborhood when, and who to track down whose garbage got left on the street. So it's not an unusual process. Waste Management changed the way they do things a couple of years ago. We used to deal with the local office out of Sioux Falls, and it was, we usually got their applications back in a timely fashion. All of those now get shipped to a centralized corporate headquarters somewhere.
Chicago, I think.
And, and we just don't get it back. I think we didn't get it back last year until the very, very last day.
How many service providers do we have currently then, Brian? How many providers do we have currently in the city?
Maybe half a dozen.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty close.
I just have a feeling I know where the fingers are going to be pointed on January second, when people's garbage is not getting picked up.
I have a motion, but I did not hear a second. I have a motion from Jones, second by McInerney, to approve those garbage and sewer cleaning services. Questions or discussion? Not?
I have a, a comment, maybe some food for thought for, for next time through. You know, you ask if this is kind of a, a typical process. Um, I know there's, there's quite a few places out there that limit the amount of vendors that can come in, because it is wear and tear on your streets, you know, to say no more than three vendors in a city. Some cities, I've lived in cities where it was only, it was, it was one, one contract was awarded. Every, every trash truck that goes down my street tears that street up a little more over the years. And it's noise. I mean, let's face it, it's, they're loud, you know? So something to think about, maybe in the future, limiting it to, you know, a, a fewer number, I think we should at least consider, because it, it does cost us money for every additional company that's running down the street in their, you know, ten-ton trash truck, so.
And, and part of our license is, is the size of the vehicles. We restrict them.
Right, sure, yep. Just, just, just a thought.
Yep, thank you. Again, I have a motion and a second to approve those garbage haulers and sewer cleaning people. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, then our next up is appointing a city finance officer.
I dropped off, or I gave you a memo. I'm making a recommendation that we appoint Christina, or make the change to Christina Smith as the finance officer effective January first. Dennis Olson has been our finance officer for a long, long time, the last few years on a, on a part-time basis. Uh, it's come to that point in time where we need, probably need a full-time, oh, we do need a full-time finance officer, um, in the office. I've attached to that memo the job description that, um, our, our HR consultant has developed. If you look at Christina, she's been with us since June of oh-eight. She started out as accounts payable, uh, quickly moved on to general ledger responsibilities. She's completed the annual financial reports since two thousand and thirteen. Been very integral in the auditing process since we're audited every year, um, since oh-nine, and that goes back for a number of years before that. She has her B.S. in accounting from U S D. Worked at Hy-Vee prior to that for four years. So she has a wealth of experience in the accounting field. The average wage, if, if you remember back to that wage and benefits survey that we did this fall, the average wage for finance officers is thirty-five eighty-seven, so about thirty-six bucks an hour. Uh, that falls onto line sixty-seven of our current pay scale. I'd also recommend that we recognize Christina's experience, uh, move her up three steps, uh, since she's been doing that work for, for quite some time.
So this is basically a promotion?
It's a promotion. It's not a new position.
So we're not backfilling Christina?
We're not backfilling, um. You know, it's not a newly created position. It's just a promotion from inside. We're not creating, we're not hiring anybody new.
And she's been doing this job basically for how long?
Uh, you know, doing, doing basically all of the functions as thirteen, doing the annual reports.
And, uh, I guess the only comments I'd make are, are first, congratulations, Christine. I, it's, it's a reflection of your hard work and everything, so I'm certainly all supportive of it. And, uh, just to add comments, because I have seen one recently questioning this on, on social media, which just shows to, nobody's safe from it, and that's why I, I think we need to do as much as we can to highlight, uh, the, the strong work that our staff has done. And the reason that, to me, we wouldn't post this position and interview others is because Christina's been interviewing for this job every single day she's been here for the last nine years, and shown that she's the, the most qualified candidate. And, uh, there's no reason to post when you know you've got the, the right candidate that, that's done an amazing job, so. I'll make a motion to approve.
What?
And I'll second it the third time.
We got a motion from McInerney, second by Fish, to, uh, appoint Christina as our finance officer. Discussion?
Can we make one comment of, just also to clarify, there is no legal requirement in the South Dakota codified laws or the Brandon ordinances that require you to post, publish this position. It's for you to decide.
Thank you. With that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right.
It doesn't hurt that she's a coyote.
Oh, my goodness. All right, and then bringing up to resolution twenty-six dash seventeen, a transfer of funds.
Christina corrected me that this is, uh, the general, transferring from the general fund to the sewer fund. As a portion of the pond reclamation project, I, I think that there's a portion of that project that is general fund related and not fully sewer. We're basically moving dirt from that sandhill down to pond one so that we can reclaim that land and use it in the future. Raleigh kind of thinks he has dibs on it for maintenance building. So there is, there is a portion of that project that is not sewer related. And this three hundred and ninety thousand is, is to reflect that cost that should be in the general fund and not sewer.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to accept twenty-six seventeen.
A motion from Jones, second from Hausmann, to approve resolution twenty-six seventeen, transfer of funds. Question or discussion? Not? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that brings us to the end of administration, but again, I would hope that some of you will, will take some thought and consider sitting in.
May, may I make a comment here? Dennis, I, I know that your title is changing, but personally, I want to thank you for all your years of service. I hope you're still staying around, but, um, I know your title's changing, and you've done an admirable job under sometimes not the easiest situation, so thank you for your service.
Yep, thank you.
This is my lean-to encyclopedia of knowledge.
Yeah.
I use them all the time, poor guy.
He, he was here when I took this chair, and I'm glad he's still here with me. He's been the person that I go to also. Again, thank you. Street committee, we have our work report. And Raleigh assures me that he is. And Raleigh assures me that he is ready for anything that happens Thursday and Friday. I did not say that word. Okay, um, next item is staff. We have a request to hire a full-time public works maintenance assistant. And I will let you go with that.
Raleigh and the HR department interviewed six, six applicants. Uh, with the recommendation to hire Dustin Wagner, full-time at, uh, line twenty-one, step one of the two thousand eighteen pay schedule at seventeen ninety-three an hour. Dusty would come to the city with some, some experience that we find valuable. He's been working as a electrician. He's a fire chief. Yep, that's, that's the same Dustin. He also has his Class A CDL, so very good experience.
And I know that he'll be working for an employer that will allow him to do daytime fire calls.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Thank you. Um, that will be a motion and a second for me, please.
Second.
A motion from Hausmann, second by Jones to approve the additional hire of Dusty Wagner. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Um, next item is something that we have just, we discussed a little bit a couple of months ago on our drive into Sioux Falls on Holly Boulevard. And John, I'll let you take over if you want.
Sure, I know we had a, uh, a visitor that approached us and then talked about how poor that drive is during a snow event and for the days following, the, the snow gets packed down, it turns to ice, it, it builds ruts. It, it really makes for a, a dangerous and, and poor driving experience. Uh, so we had talked that, you know, the concern was that the plows weren't getting there enough. Uh, that, that's not the issue. We had talked that night that, that we didn't feel that was the issue. The issue really is how open it is out there and that it's just constantly blowing snow across. So I, I had mentioned that I thought that the best way to address was probably preventative rather than, um, the, the lack of, uh, attentiveness. At the time, I didn't know what that would be, you know, dig deeper ditches, build structures, a snow fence. Um, I was, I was just driving in the other day and I, I was looking around. First thing that came to mind, I guess, is that if we left ten rows of corn in on the north side or so, that, that would potentially be a natural snow fence, you know, blocks the wind. So just look to approach the owners of that farmland, see if they would even be open to the idea. Um, and see what something like that might cost. I assume it's gotta be drastically cheaper than, um, a man-made type structure and, and permanent structure there, so. And my understanding is Brian actually did reach out and may have an update there or may not?
Yeah, I talked with the property owner that owns the property on the north side of Holly. They're, they'd be interested in talking to us about partnering on some type of a natural snow fence project. You know, the corn might be an issue since they rotate crops. So, uh, we get, but they're open to the discussion, so we can start having that, you know, in the next couple of months.
Yeah, and that's not something obviously we can enact until next year, but, um, so for this year, Raleigh, I know you guys get out there enough, but always kind of keep it, if, if you got an extra chance to get, make an extra pass out there, it certainly wouldn't hurt. And then, uh, you know, we'll have to start exploring this as an option, you know, this spring or, or next year, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, item D, discussion, the Holly Boulevard project and Dogwood Street.
So this is in regard to that project that is being proposed for construction next year, next summer, starting in the spring. It's the, uh, the replacement of the sanitary sewer trunk line from the lift station south, basically all the way to the pool. And along that, some, um, utility and surfacing improvements on Holly and then surfacing and utility improvements on Dogwood and Main south to Aspen. So just really some high-level stuff that we wanted to bring in front of you. We've been meeting with Stockwell and, and, uh, some coordination meetings while we're pushing through this design and, and getting closer to the point where we get to a more of a final plan process. And we wanna, we wanted to bring forward some information to you. Just real quick too, I wanted to touch on our schedule. The final construction plans forbid our plan to be done in the beginning of February. And we're looking at a bid letting date at the beginning of March. So we have a couple of months, two and a half months still for some plans and, and, uh, or final plans to be completed. So you have a, there's an agenda that we had put together on page fifty and then exhibits forty-five, pages forty-five through forty-nine that you can kind of thumb through. So, starting with the first one here, um, in the original scope of work for the design, we did not have a hydraulic study of the Big Sioux River upstream of Holly Boulevard. Included in that, the original cost estimate for the storm sewer, which is, uh, a fifteen-foot sick, uh, CMP pipe, which is the, the, um, metal pipe that you can see underneath Holly, which goes into that pond just west of that parking market there, west of Casey's. And the original plan was to just replace that. It acts more like an equalization pipe during high water or flooding events. And there's some potential cost savings if we could reinstall that pipe as a smaller pipe. And Stockwell Engineers was looking into what the design of that bridge to the west, uh, at the time. And I can let John interject here. They were going to look at, um, potentially look at what the design of that bridge would allow for volume of water to go underneath Holly Boulevard during that event.
We, uh, we, we spoke to Minnella County when they rebuilt that bridge. Uh, it was, uh, the understanding of the county engineer that that bridge was designed larger or at a longer span, so it would, would allow more water to pass underneath of it. And, uh, it was their thought at that time that the, this fifteen-foot diameter culvert might not be necessary. Uh, however, they don't have documentation in their office that certifies or shows that that isn't needed. And so if we want to pursue, uh, making any changes to this area, we have to model that Big Sioux River and determine whether or not that is, uh, you know, uh, something we can throttle down or reduce the size of that culvert. So at this point, we're in the process of developing a proposal for the changes to that. And then we can decide if that is worth pursuing, uh, or, or not. Uh, we feel it's necessary so that we have, uh, a good, uh, understanding of what's happening with the Big Sioux River there and the cross culvert. And, uh, there's other issues that are, uh, that are playing into that. And that is the, uh, the hundred-year flood elevation and floodway that are, are impacted, uh, with this project. And we also need that study for some of those, uh, concerns that we have going forward. So, uh, we will be developing that, working through, uh, the details of that with Brian and Paul and bringing that back to you at a later date, very soon.
So that was just for discussion. Uh, number two, we've spoken with and actually met with Ellison Eastern on the crossing at the, the rail. Crossing is going to be improved, removed and replaced. And during that removal process, it needs to be the entire width of the crossing. We can't do half of it at a time. It's not feasible. And we've received that notice basically from Ellison Eastern.
I was gonna say, we are not doing it because we want to. We are being told to do it.
We are coordinating with Ellison Eastern and they have explained to us that, from a constructability standpoint, that they're, it's a concrete crossing, so in order for us to do it. And from a long-term perspective, I mean, that's what we want. We want that crossing to be built correctly and, and it's a permanent fix. So with that in mind, Holly Boulevard will at some point have to be full closure. Unless we took some extreme measures, which, again, Stockwell is going to look into. Uh, if, if we could potentially leave it open, it would require some grading and/or significant temporary surfacing. And I don't even know, we're not even at that point yet.
No, I don't think we're at that point. I mean, at the briefing meeting, if I could add, uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, emergency vehicle. For sure, we need to get emergency vehicle, uh, access, uh, to west, towards the bluffs there. So whether or not we work out an agreement with the church there or some way to make sure that we have, uh, a route for emergency vehicles. But then also maybe consider another alternative to, to maneuver around the railroad. I think that's gonna be, I, I don't think that's possible, uh, simply because the railroad, I mean, there's, there's a lot more going on than just replacing the crossing. We're also elevating the grade of the railroad so that the grade of the railroad's gonna be raised. And so as a result of that, the grading and the work that they need to do beyond the end, end of the crossing is, is probably two and three hundred feet beyond it. So I just don't think it's even a feasible option to consider anything but a full closure during the railroad, uh, reconstruction. Now, what we wanted to consider, uh, have you consider was other alternatives to that. And maybe that is, uh, closing it longer than four weeks, which was the minimum that the railroad needed. Uh, and so that we, uh, could maybe expedite the construction of the project. That would help improve, if the contractor had a full rain of that area, uh, they could potentially work, uh, at a faster pace and maybe get that done quicker than what, uh, it would be done if it was done in phases. So that is what, uh, Paul and Brian have asked us to look into. And that's what we're gonna be looking into here in the next week or so, so that we can bring some more ideas back to you. But at this point, keep in mind, no matter what, we will have to close the railroad or the Holly down for four weeks. During that time, we will detour traffic, so the traffic will be detoured. However, it's not an easy way in and out of town. I understand that. So, uh, and that's, so, so to minimize that would be ideal, obviously. And we all felt that when, when, uh, the rail, uh, you know, the, they replaced a rail at Rice, uh, a couple of years ago. So, so that's coming yet.
Construction projects like this, that we want to try to, we want to, we want to determine a cost balance with the time balance on a project like this. It could be closed just the duration of the crossing. And then we move into a temporary access situation where the overall length of the project could potentially be extended to the point where we're impacting adjacent property owners and businesses and traffic for a longer duration of time. Whereas if we can close it and allow the contractor to work in a more diligent, potentially even safer situation for them and for the commuting traffic, there are some advantages to closing a section of street like this. Definitely some disadvantages from an inconvenient standpoint because there's no other easy access to the west. And in, again, taking into consideration emergency travel, which the chief and I and Stockwell and the rest of the staff will be making sure that we can get emergency vehicles to the west. And so that's, that's where these things to, and we, we want to take a, a close look at what that sacrifice would be as far as time. It also can potentially save money. Because we're not putting in temporary access, temporary surfacing, potentially additional traffic control. So there is a realistic chance that we can save some, some money as well.
So we just have to make sure that, that, um, our residents know about it quite a ways in advance so they can make alternative plans?
And that's why we wanted to bring this to you now, so that we can go through a, a really, um, you know, good planning, first of all. But as we do on all projects, we want to make sure that we're getting that information out to the public. And we'll proceed with, as we move forward into design, we'll have public meetings.
Well, I think progress always comes. I mean, there's always a toll with progress. And I think we're gonna find, and certainly anybody that's been part of the city for any length of time, you know, we've seen that road flood, we've seen a lot of things happen to where we've had to detour traffic. And as long as we can get emergency traffic out there, at the end of the day, the project is gonna outweigh the time that we have to wait. Uh, and moving forward, I think it's, you know, we need to keep in mind that there's gonna be a large stretch of road out there that we're already talking about, you know, moving from that urban setting that we did out by Heritage from Sioux Falls, where the construction is on SD one hundred, in the rest of the way into Brandon. So moving forward, I think, you know, not in the very short future, but certainly within the next ten years, when we upgrade that, that road system out there, there's gonna be times that it's gonna be down.
Yes, yes.
So we, briefly, we talked about schedule from the, from a project actual construction standpoint. The sanitary sewer can be installed to the north and early on in the project, maybe three weeks worth of, two to three weeks worth of construction there. And then we get into the actual road closure. And that could, I mean, we could time it around school. We haven't talked about this a lot because we're still in very preliminary, like I said, high-level discussion here. But then putting on a fairly aggressive interim completion date just on that stretch. Because once we're done with the utilities and grading, we can do the surfacing and get Holly Boulevard back open to traffic and then continue with the rest of the project.
I think, yeah, I, I think, you know, we're, we're, like Paul said, we're very early in the stages of that. But I think this should, you know, remind us how important Park Street is, uh, long-term. We need to be planning for Park Street corridor connection from.
Maple.
Or in Maple.
Maple and Park, yeah.
Yeah, I call it Park, but from that connection, I mean, that is so important. And we've talked about that in the past. And we certainly need to move that to the front because we, we, we need to consider that anyway. Because I think that's an important link for the city of, uh, Brandon. Do you want to go on to Dogwood?
Well, just, just real quick, we have talked about looking at a traffic study for that stretch. So that is part of a discussion in the near future. Oh, yeah, we can move on to Dogwood. We met with Ellison Eastern and the DOT in regard to this crossing. And in that discussion, we actually brought up the Dogwood Street, uh, rail crossing. There was some talk about potentially vacating the right-of-way and putting in, as you can see in this diagram here, two cul-de-sacs, uh, which would then eliminate our responsibility for reconstructing the crossings. We pay for the crossings. We did it on Aspen and we did it on Sioux. And we did the improvements to both of those streets at the tune of about eighty thousand apiece. So I'm, just rough numbers, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars per crossing here, and we have two of them. There's actually a side spur and the main line. So estimate about two hundred thousand in savings just in construction of the crossings. We also look at removing, and a reason for Ellison Eastern and the DOT to incentivize us to do that, which isn't a lot of money. It's seven thousand dollars apiece, they told us. Ellison Eastern, seven thousand, DOT, seven thousand. But it gets rid of the liability of the crossing. That's, that's what they like to see. And it happens in a lot of communities where negotiations are, are done with railroads and smaller communities to get rid of crossings if they can. This was just an option that we came up with for discussion. Really, I mean, we, we can look at, uh, a couple of other incentives or pros for us. It gets rid of one more area where the train, when it does start coming through town, to blow its whistle. There is quiet crossings that we can do, but they are very expensive. It requires two arms on either side of the crossing to come down and completely block traffic. And rough cost on those is two hundred thousand dollars apiece, just for the arms and the lights and the electrical part of it. So that's something that could be discussed, but very highly unusual to have quiet crossings. We would have to have one at Holly, here, Sioux, and Aspen, so we'd have to redo four of them. So that, this is one location where we could potentially have a quiet crossing by getting rid of this area for a crossing. So it is feasible. We did talk with, uh, local business owners. We met with them just to get, again, preliminary discussion. We thought we'd start with them. We haven't really moved forward with any other, uh, entities or emergency vehicles or even the school, which we will if this were an option. The businesses, um, they didn't resoundingly say no, but they would prefer to leave it the way it is. If the lumberyard would have come back and said, absolutely not, this is the way we have semis come in and out and deliver, um, lumber and supplies, we could pretty much drop it if we wanted to.
I guess I look forward to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I look forward to ongoing communication. But certainly, uh, at the beginning of this, uh, conversation, unless it's incentivized more by just money, I guess I'm not a fan of closing this. And the reason being is, um, anybody that travels this road knows that it's a pedestrian artery from the west-side addition to the elementary school, to the park down there, to, uh, several different things. And, and looking, and, and I realize we're at the very beginning discussions of this. But, um, I still see a, a liability with, with the kids. Because the kids aren't gonna stop. They're, they're not gonna, the cars maybe have to turn around and head back out. But the kids are not gonna walk all the way down to, uh, Aspen Boulevard and down and then back up again. So, um, I look forward to the ongoing conversation, but as of now, unless it's incentivized by something other than money, I don't see this as an option.
I think, uh, uh, one thing that Paul and I had talked about is we've, we've touched base with, uh, the, the-
I think, uh, uh, one thing that Paul and I had talked about is we've, we've touched base with, uh, the, the South Dakota DOT. This may be eligible also for, uh, the ninety-ten funding. So if that is, uh, an eligible funding source that we could help participate, that, that could participate in ninety percent of that. We're certainly, uh, pursuing that right now so that you have that in front of you. Uh, the other thing we have to consider is the pedestrians, like you brought up. It just isn't, uh, we don't just consider it for the street. We do consider for, for pedestrians and, and even though we shut it off. You're exactly correct. The neighborhood will probably still try to utilize that crossing because it's been there for so long. So there's things we'd have to take into consideration for the pedestrian movement as well.
I'm in the same line of thinking too, and that's why I want to emphasize, this is just Paul and John Stockwell doing their due diligence and bringing forward options. And, and, and I appreciate that. That, I just don't want this to go too far and people start publicizing this and saying this. Is what I mean, we might be going to, because I'm in the same, but I, I don't view it as a, as a reasonable option. And not only all of the points plain mentioned, but to me, the permanency of it. There was, at this time last year, no one ever expected the railroads to come back and an active train. Now, we're saying they're going to be here in perpetuity and we're going to close off roads and, and put all this, this, uh, effort in and changing, you know, the way our city looks, where in 10 years, the trains could be gone just as fast as they came, right? So that'd be my, one of my concerns.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. The, uh, the other discussions that we wanted to have quick were just sidewalk. If you look again on the Holly Boulevard area, um, probably forty-six, page forty-six is a, is a good one to take a look at. We have, the extension of Holly Boulevard is very similar to what is east of Sioux and we constructed that. It's two lanes in the east and west direction with a center turn lane for the most part, until we get to the intersection. Then obviously we have the turn lanes, which, so the geometrics include the trail on the south side. We discussed the extension of the sidewalk or the trail on the, on the north side of Holly Boulevard. However, we do not have a pedestrian crossing at the Big Sioux River. So we didn't want to extend both trails to the west and then have people wanting to cross on one side or the other back across Holly Boulevard. So with that, and, and then obviously the park is on the south side. So there is, it does lend some pedestrian movement, if you will, west into, down into the park on the south side. Which in the future makes sense to have a pedestrian crossing on the south side of the bridge on Holly. With that in mind, we could extend the sidewalk in the future and grade for it now. Actually do the grading, so we would widen the grade on the north side and then extend the sidewalk in the future to the west on the north side. And then as you've seen potentially in, on some bike trails where they go underneath the bridge and then wrap back around. We could include some sidewalk that would wrap around underneath the bridge on the north side and connect to the sidewalk on the south side with that pedestrian crossing and continue to the west. So we, we're not going to extend the sidewalk. It was just, real quick, just a brief, um, overview of that. We will include it at the rail crossing because it's part of the, the funding that we've discussed in the past.
Right.
The other item that we wanted to talk about is on Main Avenue, south of Dogwood. On the west side, we have some sidewalk up to the lumberyard. We are going to continue that sidewalk through the lumberyard area and connect with the pedestrian access to the intersection, which is pretty typical. What we wanted to bring to you tonight was the discussion of the sidewalk on the east side of Main Avenue continuing to the south. In the past, we've talked about sidewalk on these residential projects, um, with fairly unpopular vote. So if we continue with sidewalk in this area, in the future, we will be moving into the core part of Brandon. We can, we can put sidewalk on this, but it was with, on the east side of Main, but it was with the intention that we could potentially continue with sidewalk as we move forward in the future with this core part of the town utility and surfacing improvement projects. If we did move into that area, some items that we've talked about is in the older parts of town where there's a lot of trees and a lot of grade issues where you see houses that are built up on, sort of up on top of hills that weren't graded with the intent of sidewalk, now with fairly large and old trees. A lot of those would be removed, not a lot of them, but the ones where the sidewalk is and then potentially having to grade back into people's yards. Pretty much up to the front of the house if we're looking at re-grading driveways to, to decrease or increase the slopes in those driveways and then even getting into more landscaping items. And this is kind of the start of that. So if we want to look at putting sidewalk in that area of town, we would want to do it as a part of this project. We would want to start here on, on Main Avenue.
Just keep in mind, the west side is pretty much there. It's just a matter of filling in some areas. It's the east side that's the real impact here that will be, uh,
And if you look closely at that, that really tells the true story for the core section of town. Because if you look at where that sidewalk is and you look at all the trees that it's overlaid all the way along that, that's only the beginning of the Pandora's box that we will be moving into going into the core section of town.
Yep.
And I remember when we would trim trees and put a bill in the people's mailbox that we trimmed their trees and how unpopular that was. So it's something that we're discussing, something that we will discuss.
Okay.
Well, sidewalks historically in the newer, in the newer parts of town, obviously, that is, it's, it's a standard. We're moving forward with sidewalk. And so when it comes to discussions on snow removal and items like that, and this is just an area of town that in the sixties and seventies, sidewalk was not installed. And, and by now, those Boulevard trees are quite large and they provide a lot of shade for those people and it'll be something that we have.
And if I, I'll jump on, on John's thinking here. I appreciate our due diligence here because frankly, if we wouldn't have discussed it, then we would have been thrown under the bus, so.
I want you to be aware also on this project, um, we are calling in Joe and Don occasional meetings so that they are up to speed on what's happening with the utilities and the street portion of that. So that they have direct, uh, firsthand, uh, uh, view of what goes into that design. Uh, I also want you to be aware that, that Don, for one of your comments, Paul will be doing all the negotiating for the right-of-way. I think there's forty properties on this property in this project.
Easements.
Easements of, uh, yeah, not right-of-way, but easements. So Paul will be doing, uh, all those contacts and stuff like that, and that's something that's pretty common. Um, I had simply reached out on those other ones to, uh, keep, keep that rolling. So, thank you.
Step on up, sir. Press the purple button for me, will you please? State your name and address for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dean Torgerson, winner, winner, chicken dinner on two hundred West Holly Boulevard. Uh, just purchased that property a week ago today.
Well, congratulations.
My driveway will be closed for six to eight weeks. Um, talked to the property owner on either side of me, on the east and the west about parking and being able to get into, um, my driveway. Um, I talked to Paul. I want to, I want to work with the city as best I can, um, in getting in and out of property. Um, my future wife and stepdaughter was moving here after school. So trying to get some furniture.
Getting their household stuff moved in, but I, I just had a couple of quick questions and a comment. Um, when looking at that current, uh, Holly, um, intersection and the main artery that it is going to Sioux Falls and now we're talking of having trains coming through as we continue to develop to the west side of Brandon um, and more traffic coming through there, at what point does that intersection possibly become an overpass? Uh, don't know. Um, and then working with, uh, we, we addressed the emergency services. I appreciate that, being on the, the west side of the tracks. I think that's, that's very important. Um, possibly reducing speed limit from that intersection all the way out to the bridge. Now that there will be a sidewalk alongside of that, if we reduce that to, I believe it is thirty-five going miles an hour coming into town. If we just extend that out to there, because, um, I think that sidewalk is a great addition to be able to get out to that park. Um, and I guess, do we have any idea of number of trains that will be coming by or the timing of those? I understand it's all preliminary on the city side.
I, I, I don't remember the exact number. Was it four to five a day? Do you remember, Brian? I'd have like ten or fi- I don't.
Sure. And I know we're all, you know, we're just kind of just opening this and then.
It's been maybe three months, four months that the, the railroad said that they were going to start using that track.
Sure.
Uh, because they purchased, uh, another rail line that is over by Manley, Minnesota, the southern one, and this will allow them to connect to the Union Pacific, which will increase their business. So then they want this rail line to be able to connect with that. So we're about as much in the dark as, as you are.
And, and I understand, I mean, the railroad is what it is.
Yep.
They will come through. Um, we just need to work with that, um, as far as that. So, um, yeah, I, I guess, uh, really nothing else along that line. Um, being new to the Brandon area, um, and with kids, uh, seeing the train line going down next to the pool. That isn't also a concern, I guess, as a resident, having the kids not only cross if we close a road, but if they're going down to the pool area, that is very open in that park. Um, so I'm considering putting in a fence on my property to figure out some kind of safety concern. But would like to see that addressed also with the city as we go forward. So again, I want to work with the city whatever I can. I talked to Paul already. He's got my information. But, uh, yeah, closing that for eight weeks will be interesting or so.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Well, you, you weren't around when we, when we totally redid Holly Boulevard from, from Sioux to, to Split Rock. And it, because that was a, a very sad road and we poured that concrete. It was, it, yeah, it, it's an inconvenience, but now it works.
I, I purchased it Monday, found out Tuesday about that stuff. So, yeah, when it, it, but, thank you.
Yes. Hey, thank you very much and welcome to the community. Um, sidewalk on the north side of Holly, did we talk that? We talked about everything? Okay. All right. Anything else, streets?
Nothing else, streets. Uh, we're going to be ready for Thursday and Friday, right?
Yep, he said he was. All right. Water sewer, um, water development report there. Got, hearing good voice there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I am. All right. So we had a water development committee meeting last Tuesday on the twelfth. Um, first and foremost, I have a note here to mention, this was brought up, the, this concern was brought up at our last council meeting. Um, all water projects are on hold, just so everyone knows. Having said that, let's move forward with what we talked about at our meeting. So first of all, I had, uh, I had a gentleman from the Department of Environmental and Natural Resources come. His name was Mark Mayer. Um, he, he presented a lot of good information for us. He spoke for, like he said, about forty minutes. Uh, he talked about the Safe Water Drinking Act. The EPA establishes the national, you know, we have primary and secondary standards. The EPA establishes, uh, the national primary district, uh, drinking water regulations and sets those standards. Enforcing those standards is where the D E N R comes in. They, they enforce the standards for us here in South Dakota. They oversee, uh, he mentioned they oversee six hundred and forty-seven water systems. Uh, they look for inorganic contaminants like lead and copper and, uh, organic contaminants, microbiological contaminants and volatile organ, organics. Um, if any violations occur, they, their, their rules are that the public is, has to be notified. So again, I, I say this because a lot of people have voiced concern about our quality of water. Is it safe and, and whatnot? Safe is, I guess, uh, a, a term that's subject to the, to the end user. But as far as the regulations are concerned, we do pass all of the standards. Um, secondary contaminants, again, that are established by the EPA like hardness or TDS, total dissolved solids, um, or discoloration, smell, that kind of thing, those are secondary contaminants and are considered to be not harmful to human health, whereas primary standards are. Our hardness, as the gentleman from the DNR stated, our hardness is an average for the state of South Dakota. And our TDS levels seem to range between four fifty and five fifty. I think that may change a little bit if, if water is being processed through the HMO system, but for now, that's what they are. Uh, again, what we're going to be talking about at the meeting is can we improve that? Can we make those numbers better? Uh, and again, I'm, I'm being kind of quiet on this because I'm just going to wait for, for the, for the appropriate time to, to elaborate on that. But, um, he did, Mark did mention, uh, Brandon has received the, what they call the Secretary's Award for the past sixteen years and we're one of only forty-four communities that have received that. So that's, that's, I mean, again, I, I remember talking about this back in the summer. There, there are a lot of people that do a lot of hard work with respect to testing and treating our water. And, and these folks, I mean, you know, we, we do owe it to them. It's not, you know, Brian Reed's fault that your water hardness is what it is. Our water hardness is what it is is because we as a city, that's what we've decided on in the past. That's what the council has decided on, to treat the water at that level for X amount of dollars. That's something that we as a town can change if we want to, and that's what this committee is, is going to, to approach. But it's not one individual's fault the, for it being what it is. And, and I, again, I want to add that according to the government, it is, it is good. You know, we're, we're doing a good job. The city is doing a very good job, um, with what we as a town are giving them. And I say that meaning the cost of our treatment, you know, do we want to leave it in place? Do we want to change it? That, again, we'll, we'll get there. So when we talk about water, you know, my perception of what is good water has changed. Are we talking about quantity? Are we talking about safety or health hazards? Are we talking about hardness or taste or discoloration? So when we talk about water from this point forward, I'm going to be more specific if, if I say good water or, or higher quality water. What do I mean by that? We need to address those specifically. Um, we address the safety of it. Now, again, I'm not saying we can't improve on it because I think we can. But we have addressed what our current scenario is. And whether we decide to make it safer or better is, is up to us as a, as a town. I want to remind you that that will come at a cost. I for one am willing to pay a little extra to treat our water to a, a more satisfactory level. The other gentleman that I had come in was, uh, Scott Bus, who was the program manager of the MCWC. Um, and we were talking, we, we discussed at last council meeting, we discussed a possible connection to MCWC as a supplemental, uh, source for water for not only the short term, but the long term. So we had a meeting, uh, at City Hall with Scott and I asked him if he would be willing to show up at our, at our, uh, water committee meeting and, and he did. He was nice enough to show up and very grateful for that. So the long, I know it's been a long night. I'll, I'll kind of try and keep this short. The, the, the short of the story is MCWC, as we've talked about, has a water tower, uh, over near the, um, industrial park. We would not have to purchase that water tower. They would essentially allow us to use it for, for free as long as we've purchased their water. Um, a, a few key points he talked about, that water tower had been painted recently, so maintenance on it was minimal. That's probably, uh, an important issue we need to consider. And that they could provide us with approximately four hundred thousand gallons per day for the short term. They could also, he mentioned, they could also provide that number on more of a long-term basis. What they didn't want to commit to on a long-term basis was providing us with, you know, a round number of, of a million gallons of water a day without some type of a commitment. Because if, if we are going to ask them for a million gallons a day, they are going to need to seek alternate sources and infrastructure and et cetera. One example would be they need to add approximately five miles of, of pipes and, and that's going to come at a cost. And it's, some of that will be our cost. So that's something that we need to discuss and that we'll get to in the meetings. Looking at them as a long-term solution. For now, I can tell Uh, looking at them as a long-term solution, for now, I can tell you, what they've told us as a short-term solution would be, they could provide up, you know, approximately four hundred thousand a day, uh, we would, we would be able to use the water tower, the, the water, we discussed price, their water, their price for water right now is approximately two dollars a gallon, which is significantly lower than, uh, for example, what Sioux Falls would be able to give us. So those are some, some of the pros, some of the cons, is, you know, there's gonna be some cost with this, this isn't something, we, this is not a matter, and it's very important to understand this, this is not a matter of just connecting a pipe. First of all, we would have to connect a pipe and valves and meters and some more infrastructure, and that will come at a cost. The main, the main portion of this, that's, that's would affect us as a town is the fact that we would need to change our treatment process, we would, uh, they use chloramined water, we cannot put their water into our water system as a chlorine-treated water system and expect to be safe, cause it would, that would not happen, that would be a very dangerous scenario, so, we would have to change our treatment process. So then we talk about, well, is it, is it worth it to change our treatment process, well, then we get into the discussion of, well, that depends on how, what, where we're gonna source our water over the next ten years, twenty years, thirty years. Um, some of the things, just my personal opinion, some of the things I've heard is that we will be possibly looking at other sources to where we would need to, need to change our treatment process anyway, we would need to inject the ammonia to, to create the chloramine water, so, we're, we don't have a decision on this yet, I just wanna update you and let you know that we would need to change our treatment process to accept their water, now, is that something that we need to do anyways? Possibly, that's, we're gonna get to that, uh, especially when we talk at our next meeting about sources from the geologists and hydrologists, so, we'll get to that, whether we need to do that or not. Um, the, the other, the other big question I had for him was, uh, is this time-sensitive, cause, cause I had heard that, you know, they, they've got several customers lined up, and if we didn't accept, you know, if we didn't do this in the next X amount of weeks, that we would lose it. He said that's not necessarily the case, uh, or not, he didn't say necessarily, he said that is not the case. It's not necessarily time-sensitive for us, I think, well, we need to come up with a decision because winter's coming, and if we're gonna start this process, we should start it now so that we can at least have some hope of getting water from them, or using water from them in the summer, granted that this might be a, a nine-month process, possibly longer, maybe, maybe sooner. So if we're gonna do this, we need to, we need to start taking action soon, um, just because of, of the, the lengthy process that it'll require, so. Um, so, as far as a connection to MCWC, at last council meeting, we said we would talk about it at our water committee meeting, we talked about it, and everybody decided we wanna wait and hear what these folks have to say tomorrow night, from the hydrologists and geologists, to make a decision on whether we need that water or not, so that, that decision is coming, there'll be some, uh, we'll, we'll know a lot more tomorrow night, so we're gonna revisit that connection to MCWC at our next council meeting. Uh, the other item that was presented to us at the last city council meeting was the process of RFQs and/or RFPs, a request for quotation and/or qualifications, and a request for proposal. Uh, again, this, this kinda guided in, or this, the, we debated this for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty minutes at least, whether we need to, as a city, keep our water projects open to proposal from multiple firms rather than just going with one firm. It was the water committee's recommendation, if I, if I remember right, it was unanimous, that we do open that process up to an RFP process and/or RFQ, I say RFQ because an RFQ, a request for qualifications, to me, I think that's something that we should incorporate into the request for proposal, rather than taking a month to, to gather RFQs and then, an, an, an additional month to gather RFPs, can we incorporate that into one and, and make the process a little shorter, so. It was unanimous, everybody wanted to open that process up, keep in mind that when we do go out for a, an RFQ, the scope of service is gonna be very specific, it's, it's not gonna say, hey, can you make our water better, or can you, can you, uh, add to our water infrastructure, the scope of service is going to be very specific. Do we need to drill this well at this site, or do we need to add this treatment process to our treatment plant, so, keep that in mind. Um, and then, last, we, we do have a mission statement, and I'll read it to you real quick. Our mission statement is to educate the public and assist Brandon City Council in identifying best practices for affordable and sustainable quality water for the community's short-term and long-term needs. And I'm, yes, applauding, right?
Very good.
I'm very committed to, especially after speaking with the geologists and hydrologists, I'm very committed to coming up with a long-term plan as well as just getting through next summer.
Yes.
And when I say long-term, we need to look at thirty years down the road.
Exactly, exactly.
We need to take care of Mother Earth, and from what I'm hearing, there's gonna be some, some change coming. If, if, if what I hear is correct and, and follows through, so. Um, our next meeting is tomorrow night, rather than next week, we pushed, we pushed it to, uh, tomorrow night because of the holidays. Uh, tomorrow night, I, I invite everyone to attend, it's gonna be, again, one of our more impactful meetings that we're gonna have. The state geologist Derek Isles will be attending, he will, he's going to bring his own, uh, um, projection screen and everything, he's got a, he's got a good presentation put together for us, he's gonna tell what, he's gonna tell us what wells are available around us, why we should or should not use them, and he's gonna tell us what other additional sources that we can consider while, while doing this. Uh, and then after that, Jay Gilbertson, a hydrologist, uh, as well as, uh, Dick Hammond is, is probably gonna be here, but Jay will be giving a presentation as well, he is a hydrologist, uh, Dick Hammond will be there, and of course, Pat Hammond as well, she's on the water committee. Dick is Pat's, um, brother-in-law, I thought it was her husband, it's her brother-in-law. Yeah, so hydrology runs in the family. Um, and then after that, we were going, we're gonna talk about this at our next meeting, whether the next meeting will be January, uh, third or January ninth, we can't do it on January second because we're gonna have a council meeting that night, so, we'll get to our, the continuation of our schedule at next meeting, so. Um, that is what we talked about in short, we are, we do have a, a formal update, it's a, a two-page, I think in this case, I think it's two pages, uh, that is written by one of the uh, the committee members, and every week, that committee member will be someone different who writes the update. It's kinda like a meetings, uh, a meeting minutes for the water committee. Uh, that has a lot of good information in, I, I encourage you to read that, the city will be posting on their website, it'll also be on Facebook, and then, of course, the video is available for that meeting that, that can be viewed at any time, so. With that being said, um, I know we talked about this, uh, open RFQ, open RFP process at our, at our last council meeting. Um, first of all, I, I, do we need to make a motion, do we, do, do we have to make a motion on this, or can it just be something?
Well, it's not, it wasn't on the agenda, so, so it'll have, it'll have to be on the next.
It wasn't on the agenda, the other, the other thing you remember from our conversation, RFQs, RFPs, you need to define what the scope of that work is going to be.
Right.
So typically, what would happen is, we as staff would come to the council and say, here is the scope of work that we need to determine, whether that's a study or a project, a construction project. Here's the scope of work for the RFQ, RFP. So you need to know what that scope is, you, you don't go out for an RFQ, RFP just to go out for one. You gotta define what those companies will be proposing.
So it goes project by project?
Correct.
Right, that's what I think.
And we have the next project, then we would.
Whatever we put into our, whether it's an ordinance or whatever, I mean, that's why I think we need to have a lot more discussion about, because we can't just be putting RFPs out for every fifty thousand, twenty thousand dollar project, but if, if that's what we've got as our specific verbiage, we'll have to, and that's why I think it's important with how we define it, right?
Yeah, but I, I, I agree, it's, it's something that needs to be, uh, but yeah, we can make a motion because it's not on the agenda, so.
And, and that's something that we can discuss, maybe we, maybe we, we're talking about a dollar amount, anything above a dollar amount, we go out for an RFP.
Yes.
Cause like you say, the little, you know, minor fixes here and there aren't, and, and that's why I say we talked about the scope of service, and, and it will be sp- specific to scope of service.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
I do too, thank you.
Um, so as far as not being on the agenda, I guess I assumed it was a, as part of the water committee report, uh, I, that's my bad, I've been preoccupied with some health things going on, a health scare going on, so, I will make sure that it is on the agenda next time, cause we do need to address this, in the meantime, it's not gonna, I guess it's not gonna hurt us, all water projects are on hold. So whether we do it tonight or two weeks from now, um.
Just make sure we do it right, the first thing.
Yeah, I, we, I do wanna make sure we do it right, yes.
Yes, indeed, thank you.
As long as we realize that doing that right is open to opinion.
Yep, exactly.
Agreed.
Alright, now we have presentation, city staff.
Raleigh and Donovan have been working on a presentation on what we do for testing for the drinking water.
Upside and downside, I guess, going last is, uh, as much as we've discussed it, you probably took care of most of my presentations, so. Um, Christina, could you go to the one that says city water testing? It's kinda off in your pack, it's, uh, one I wanted to talk about first was the one that says city of Brandon water testing. Um, city monitors chlorine levels in the town every day, three different places, different times of the, uh, week. Um, we also are required by DNR to test for coliform bacteria and E. coli. We take ten tests a month, that's a hundred and twenty samples a year, we've had one sample that was possibly contaminated in the last sixteen years. And I have a form that I'll talk about that here in a minute. Um, after we did the repeat samples, all those samples that we had to take, which is triple of what you have from the one place, you have to go either side of it to test after that. Um, we also test our disinfection byproducts, which is also the THMs, HAA fives. Um, we're required to do that annually, um, last sample was just taken here August seventh, and we've been below the range, so we usually will get a, uh, I guess not so much on the TT, or THMs and HAA fives, but the others, which we'll go into next, we'll get a waiver on those. VOCs are tested every six years, um, reason being is we did it back in the, around two thousand or right around there, we did some air, extra testing, they gave us a waiver, um, we've tested all those, uh, all the wells for VOCs now. Uh, last compliance sample for well one, and that should be well six. Uh, we're taking on October fifth, twenty seventeen, uh, next compliance sample need to be taken somewhere between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. That is when our waiver expires. Um, with all the questions raised about the water quality, we have done VOC tests on all four wells in the city, one, three, six, and seven. Um, and I'd like to point out that well seven is not online, cannot be put online until the rest of the water project is finished. Um, cities required by DNR test for IOCs every nine years. Uh, as Don talked, that has a lot to do with your total dissolved solids, which is, uh, metals, uh, minerals that are in your water, uh, last sample was taken prior to this, uh, stir here. Prior to that was taken in two thousand eleven, that expired, uh, that waiver expires in twenty nineteen. Um, entire state of South Dakota has a waiver for testing for cyanide, we still have to take a sample every so many years, I wanna say that was, I don't think I put that in there, but I think we do it every, same time with the IOCs, every nine years. Um, also required to test for fluoride, even though we do not put fluoride in our water anymore because we got a waiver, because they changed the amount of chemical that they thought to put into the water should be a point seven, and they said as long as you contain, or can maintain a point five in your water system naturally, you will not have to put it in, so we filed for the waiver, we now have a waiver, but we still have to test for it every year, once a year, to make sure that we're maintaining that, and that's out of every well that gets used, um, not just, I, I, I should say, it's out of every well that is used, so if we would happen to start well three, then we have to take it out of there also. Um, we also have a waiver for asbestos, which, that's kinda based on our Langlier index of the water, chemical makeup of the water, um. We're, we're not acidic, we're more, uh, scaling, so, if you do have any asbestos pipes in your system, that will not break them down, it'll actually coat them, so that's one reason we have the waiver. Uh, we also test for SoCs, synthetic organic compounds. Um, the city did this once back in, I wanna say, correct me if I'm right, that was ninety-eight when we started the treatment plant? Um, we, we had to sample then where that well six was, because that's our site, the SoCs are basically, they're protecting it from fuels, pesticides, um, stuff like that, it's, they don't want more of that synthetic organics into your water system, so, we gave them a plan where the well was, any fields that were around it, any gas stations, anything like that, and as long as nothing like that changes, we don't have to send the SoCs in, but we did do that October twenty-first of twenty seventeen on every well. Um, also required to test for nitrate on an annual basis. Uh, sample was taken on seven, ten of twenty seventeen this year, and because we ran well three for seven days last summer, we did test that also, but we were not required to. The only time we're required to is if we run that well for thirty days or more. Um, last compliance samples for one and six were on ten thirty-one. Cities required by DNR to re- test for nitrates every three years. Um, we took those compliance samples on ten thirty-one of twenty seventeen this year for wells one and six, and the last compliance sample was taken in twenty fourteen. Well three has not been tested for that because it does not get used except for in emergency situations, and over the last, I don't know, probably eight years, we maybe run that well twice, and the last one was last year here, so. Uh, cities required to test for radiological chemicals every three years. Last compliance sample for well six and one were taken on ten two of twenty seventeen. City has not got the results back from the test lab, state health lab, but we found out today that we should have those sample numbers for all, uh, wells one.
Yeah, they, they told me when I talked to them today, that we should hopefully have those results tomorrow for all of the radium tests and stuff, that's what they told me on the phone today when I talked to them.
That would be.
So, they're gonna try to get those to me as soon as they can.
It'd be like an early Christmas present for me.
And that wasn't on all the wells, that was, uh.
I believe she said that they would have well one, three, six, and seven.
So maybe it will be all four of the wells, if we're lucky. I told him, I'm not gonna hold my breath, it's four to five week tests, and we sent them in in October, so. Um, also, cities required to test for lead and copper every three years, we distribute those twenty bottles out to the sites. We had to come up with a s- uh, site map for the state, they approved that, um, then we send the sample bottles out, give instructions for the people on how they want to, or how they're supposed to take the sample, and we just did that in August of twenty seventeen. Last ones were done in twenty fourteen. Now, now you can go to that one that says city of Brandon drinking water information. As Don stated, that shows that we have all kinds of things that we test for, it'll actually, on the second page, it'll actually tell you how often we sample for it, every nine years on a lot of these, every six years, some on, or some, uh, every three years on some, um, where this says that we do have a waiver, reason we have the waiver is because we were found to have non-detectable chemical there, or it's just such a low rate that they do not have it, uh, listed for us to test annually. Third page, you'll see that we have our bacteriological monitoring reports, um, ten samples every month, a hundred and twenty samples. This was for last year, by the way, up till twenty, July first of twenty seventeen here. So this year, we have done a hundred and twenty-three samples at the end of the year. Um, gives you the dates of the last time we tested lead and copper, gives you the results there. Um, as you can see, the lead was a one point three milligrams per liter, or, uh, micrograms per liter, action level is fifteen. Uh, copper level was at a point seven two, and action level is a one point three. Um, disinfectant, that's the one I was telling you about earlier with the THMs, the HAA fives. Um, that kinda goes with our sampling every month, though, we report our chlorine residual to them every month, or report it quarterly.
Every quarter.
And we run, we'd have to do a running average on it, so. Um, there again, you can see the THMs quarter average was a thirty-four, and the HAA five for quarter was a nine point one five. Uh, that also shows the asbestos waiver, testing's not required because we're, our Langlier scales, uh, Langlier scales, uh, on the scaling side. Next page shows violations from two thousand twelve until two thousand seventeen, no violations. And then I gave you guys a handout, one that says a memo on top. It just basically goes through our sampling procedures. What happens if there is a sample that comes back positive for, uh, total coliform? We have to take three repeat samples within twenty-four hours. And that is one from the original sampling point, and one within five service connections upstream, and one five service connections downstream. Also have to take a sample at the, uh, if it's, they consider it a triggered source, then we also have to take the sample at our well that was in service at that time. And if you have more than one well, you will take more than one sample. If the repeat samples come back negative, you're good, no violation. Uh, the one sample we had this year that came back positive for total coliform, uh, could've been due to a bad sample bottle, uh, improper handling when they tested it. We're also required, the state requires us to somehow treat where we're getting our water from. And when I say treat, it used to be flamed, but with faucets becoming plastic nowadays, can't flame them. Donovan knows.
Yeah, I've melted a couple over the, over the years.
So, um, I can have him go through, uh, how to, how they actually do one of those, or otherwise, I did throw it in there, so you can see all the instructions on how we take all these samples, uh, what the state tells us we're supposed to do. They send us the kits when we wanna take those samples. Um, if you want me to have him run through one, he can kinda give you an idea of what it takes to do one. I'll let you step up for that.
Yeah, when you go to take a bacteriological sample, what you'll do is you'll show up at the facility, and you'll re, first thing you'll do is if it has an aerator on the faucet, you have to remove it. Um, they, they don't want it going through the aerator because that is a source of possible contamination. Um, they don't, if it's a swing-style faucet, they don't want you moving it side to side because it could break particles loose. They've got quite a few different things that they want you to not do that way. What you'll do then is, since we don't flame the faucets anymore, since it's easy to melt them, um, what they recommend now is using rubbing alcohol. We have it in a spray bottle, you know, it's kind of a squirt bottle. And what you'll do is, you'll spray down the inside and outside around the tip of the faucet. After you do that, then you'll turn the water on, and you let the water run until it's a, what they consider a uniform temperature and everything for it. Um, usually takes two, three minutes of runtime, just depending. Um, you'll take a chlorine residual reading of that water at that time. That has to be recorded and put on the form that you fill out to send to the state. You'll take that. Um, when you take the, the bottles are all sealed. They've got a plastic seal around the top of the bottle to help keep them from being contaminated. You'll have to remove that. Unscrew the lid, the, the main thing. You have to make sure you don't touch the threads on the bottle, or touch the inside of the cap against anything. Basically, you don't even wanna really breathe into it, because it could, you could, if you spit into it, it's a contaminated source. Um, so you have to take that, put it underneath. You can't overfill it. There's a hundred-mill line on there that you, you fill up to. That sample also contains, that bottle contains, uh, sodium thioc sulfate, which removes the chlorine residual out of the water. And then you have to put the, the cap back on that without touching any of the threads again. It's very easy to contaminate sample. If you, I've had a couple of times where I've gone to screw the lid back on and I've touched the threads. I have to throw that one away. Um, it, it is, it's kind of a touchy thing, the way that works. Then you just put it in the bottle and ship it off to the state. They come and pick it up.
Where are you going to get these samples?
We have, we identified, uh, no, we have twenty. We have twenty sample locations total around the city. And, uh, we do ten a month. And what we do is, we stagger out every month, we do one half of the samples, um, sample sites. We have places, usually what we did when we first set this, when we set, reset up our sample site plan a couple years ago, um, we went and we tried to get locations that we can get into during the day. Residents are hard to get into, so we try to avoid using a, a personal residence. Uh, we use places, Casey's has got a, a sample site, uh, Pace has one, First National Bank, Blaine's Gas Station, um, we've got, uh, Expressway, I think has one. You know, there's a lot of the gas stations in different places of that nature. Uh, we try to get it so that we're spread out through the community as much as we can. We've got booster stations out in the bluffs. The booster station out there is a sample site location. We've also got the one that goes up towards Country Club that is also a sample location.
How many, Raleigh, how many, or for either one of you, how many samples per month? Whether it's organic, inorganic, TDS, doesn't matter. How many samples?
Normally, we take ten samples a month.
Yes.
That is a bacteriological sample.
Okay.
When we get to the point where we have to do our VOCs, SoCs, IOCs, whatever, then we have to take, and some of those VOCs bottles, there was probably six to seven bottles in some of those kits.
At least.
Because they're testing for everything, and I, I'll bring that up at the end here, but...
And they're, they're pretty specific on, a lot of those, on how you handle those bottles when you're doing those. Some of them, you have to fill up and leave a bubble without overflowing the, the tube, and then put some in the cap and try and screw it on without spilling any of the deal and getting an air bubble in it. They're, they're very specific on how they want you to, to collect certain ones of those samples.
Thanks.
And if you go to the ten-year sampling result, I think that was one of them that I handed out to you. You can go back and see where we have tested in the last ten years. I have listed all the, uh, actually, the coliform bacteria test that I put on the top, that was wrong. That was, uh, should be, yeah, a hundred and twenty-two were negative, I guess. It was a hundred and twenty-three samples total. It was, most of our testing has come from well one and six in the last ten years, because that's where our water's been coming from. If we've used well three, um, we actually do some testing, but it's very minimal, because like you say, well three is just basically a backup well. Well seven, as you can see, I do have some testing on there, but if you actually look, it was done this year, uh, for VOCs on, uh, October fifth, twenty seventeen this year. Brian asked me to get all of our wells tested. That's exactly what we did. We tested every well for everything that we could test it for. And considering what we do test it for, we actually tested more than what the state even requires us to test for, so. Basically, yeah, you can just kinda look through everything that we have tested for in the past, we have tested for since October of this year. Um, like I say, hopefully, the rad samples will be coming. I can get those to everybody. Once I get those, um, ten years is a long time. I gotta say that the operators that do the job, um, I don't get out and do that as often as they do. These guys, I've got nine, well, we'll have nine people working in my department. Out of the nine, I only have three that are not certified by the state right now. Some as high as Donovan and myself were, uh, certified class-three operators, which is even getting closer to what you have to have for a license for the city of Sioux Falls. Last but not least, I have a page, a four-page packet that I gave you. Shows everything that we sample for in wells one, three, six, and seven. These are the tests that are run by the state for us. And if you look on, uh, I'll just pick the first one here on the well sampling that we did on well one, antimony. It says it's list, or level detected was less than a point two micrograms per liter. If you look at the extra pages that were in there, there's a conversion formula, formula there. You have to divide that point two by one thousand to come up with what we actually have in our water, to get a milligrams per liter. So you're talking point zero-zero-zero-two milligrams per liter. So, and that's also compared to parts per million, as we found out in the Water Committee meeting. Um, but yeah, like I say, I'm not gonna bore you with all these tests, but you can see, every test that, that can be done, we have done it, so. I don't wanna say there's anything wrong with our water. We did do a TDS sample here just the other day. Donovan tested it at the water treatment plant. We were at a, a three ninety-five.
Three ninety-four, three ninety-five.
And we tested it once in the past here, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. We were around the same number, around four hundred.
I had a four-ten.
Which is below the state's secondary contaminant levels, recommended levels. They recommended BF5.
That number has dropped because of the HMO.
I believe so. We're, we're backwashing more frequently, which is taking and allowing that, so that it is getting rid of the stuff coming through the filters as much.
And keep in mind, that also was, uh, that twenty-four, twenty-five hour runtime, like I said earlier, that was based on what the engineers and the plant designers had told us to run. So when we decided to do twenty-four, we were doing our due diligence to keep those filters as clean as we can to push the water through there, so, best we can, and as pure as it could get through, so.
Please make these available, so.
Yep, I, I will send them to Dennis. He can put them on the website, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Donovan, thank you.
Donovan, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good bet. All right. Resolution twenty-five-seventeen.
Resolution twenty-five-seventeen will authorize the sale of the bonds to pay for the pond reclamation project in the amount of two-point-one-one-one million dollars, spread out over twenty years. There'll be more action coming at a future meetings, but this will authorize the sale.
So I will make a motion to approve.
Motion from Wells, second by Jones, to approve resolution twenty-five-seventeen, sell bonds for the biosolid project. Questions or discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, water sewer? Mr. Wells?
No, I will have that, uh, uh, RFP added to the agenda for next week, because I know people are gonna question that again. I've had some stuff going on, so, uh, I, my head's been out of the game for a couple of days, but, um, I'll get that taken care of next time.
Mr. Wells, let me remind you that you do have a family, and you do have a personal life, and you do have a job, and, so, thank you.
Keep up, though. Keep up the good work, though, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else before council? Motion from Jones, second from Hausmann, for adjournment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.